Good evening. I'd like to call to order this, the regular town council meeting for Tuesday, April 10th, 2018. Please rise for a moment of silence. Will I have the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Fishpine?
Here.
Laffin?
Here.
Laterno?
Here.
Marone?
Here.
Morganstein?
Here.
Chortel? Testa? Zandry?
Here.
Chairman Savoni?
Here.
Onto the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve or accept consent agenda items A through J.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda passes. Number four, there are no items removed from the consent agenda. Item five, public question and answer period. Mr. Gross?
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road, is Lend Lease contract gonna be on the agenda, is it staying on the agenda tonight?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know, is anybody from Lend Lease here? Okay. Oh, so you're just gonna, because I had some questions on that, that would not pertain pretty much to the pricing of the contract, so I had questions on how the interconnection was gonna work and how that was gonna affect our usage and how we're gonna be metered for it. Is that in the contract?
No, that's in agreements that are being worked on between them and the Electric Division. So I'm really not in a position to speak to the interconnection, but that is being worked on.
All right, so that, all right, and then, but you're gonna approve the dollar amounts now on the land?
Are you leaving?
No, but that's, you'll let me ask those questions then during that part, because if they don't specifically go to the function that you're asking, I don't, I just didn't wanna hear that that's off topic.
I'm telling you right now, I'll give you that latitude.
Thank you.
Mr. Morganstein?
Just flew in from Chicago. Now, Larry Morganstein, South Main Street, threw the chair to the mayor. Recently in the news, there was an article in a meeting last night about a property on Tully's Road involving all necks. It also involves a very unique ecosystem, the sand plain. Does the town have a position on the preservation of that ecosystem, which is very rare?
To my knowledge, there have been studies done and the uniqueness of it does no longer exist. Apparently at one time it did, but there's no findings of any of the unique characteristics that were believed to have once been there. For the town to do anything about it, we would have to be in a position to purchase the property. We are not in a position to purchase the property and that's where we stand.
Well, I think while you may believe that that's true or have seen sources for that, I could share with the council if anybody's interested, it is an article from 2016 and it talks about some of the uniqueness, but there's a belief that there is still the habitat that is there, it's unique, and it's something that is 95% gone at this point. We're talking about endangered plants, species, insects, and the thing that's really unique is that we've prided ourselves on our open space acquisitions. I know the mayor has prided on that, but this is something that's unique really to Wallingford and North Haven. This does not occur anywhere else. This is a habitat that really is special. It doesn't happen anywhere else. It's a unique condition, the conditions are unique. You've referred to Tyler Mill as the central park of Wallingford, but again, there's a million places like Tyler Mill. There is no other place in this country or elsewhere that's like the sand plains. This is something that's truly special and we have a chance to preserve this. Are you done? Thank you. So I don't think that that's settled, that it's gone, that it's not unique anymore and that the things that made it unique no longer exist. I think that's pretty much in dispute. In fact, I know that there's certain environmental groups that have raised the alarm and wanted to go to the meeting last night. I don't know if they attended because I was here. But I think, and I would encourage the council, again, if, could I pass this up to the council to look at this article?
You can give it to the clerk and she'll distribute it to us.
But again, this is a chance for us to do something that's totally unique. If you wanna do something special and have something that's totally unique to Wallingford, this is an opportunity to preserve it. I think the Record Journal, and Matt, you could correct me, I think their article cited nine things that were special and distinct, whether it be plant, animal, or insect that are unique to that habitat. This just doesn't occur and once that's gone, they're gone. You can't relocate it, you can't recreate it. The sand will be excavated, the conditions that created that are all gone. And here's, I think, what, 25 acres, or I don't know how much of it is. We have a chance to do something special and again, we could talk about, yes, it'll add to the grand list, but again, that money is a drop in the bucket considering something that took eons to form. If it's gone, it's gone. There's a different value there and it's something that's totally unique to this place. So I would hope that whether it's the mayor or the council, that this is something that would give us pause to say, why would we fast track this? Why would we wanna give up something that's totally unique, that is special? I mean, we talked about Wallingford being exceptional. This is truly something that's exceptional, that's here in Wallingford, that's one of a kind. So I hope that this could be put on hold, it could be considered in that, maybe the council would even ask for some of the environmental groups. I know Mary Maschinsky is very interested in this. I would hope that DEEP gets involved. I would hope that we're not gonna just pass this and let it go and once it's gone, it's gone. 95% of it is gone and once this is done, it's done. Do you have any further comment?
Yes, I do. A lengthy study was done on the property at one time. It's called a pitch pine sand plain. At one time, I'm sure it was viable. It is no longer viable. A 25 acre area is not enough area to support much in the way of unique plant or animal life. The study indicated there was no sign of any unique plant or animal life. Again, you know, we have to set our priorities at one time that I'm sure was viable. It is no longer viable and if we were to buy it, if it were found to be unique, you could not have people visiting it or walking through it. So the public would have no access to it should we spend the money and set it aside. But again, if there were some uniqueness to it left, you know, I'd be listening, but the most recent study indicates in a lengthy study over several seasons that there is no evidence of uniqueness any longer.
And yeah, here we are, the Connecticut Environmental Fund, the, I think, the Glastonbury Audubon Society, representative, state representative, Mary Maschinsky, all have an interest and feel that there's still a uniqueness and a viability to preserving this. And the thing is, is that not only could we maybe say the town maybe doesn't have the resources, but that doesn't mean that there may be other avenues to buy and purchase and protect this. But the thing is, is that if we are in haste to do this, that opportunity is gone. And again, as a town, I think it's in our interest to really be sure before this unique ecosystem is gone, to be sure that its uniqueness isn't there. And if it is there and if there's an avenue to have saved it and you haven't, shame on you.
Anyone else? I close the public question and answer period and on to item six, which is discussion and possible action regarding interest arbitration award of Wallingford and UPSU Local 24 Unit 18.
Good evening, Jim Hugtown Human Resources Director?
Good evening, Dennis Ciccarello, Labor Attorney.
Good evening. If you could give us a summary for the benefit of those watching in TV land.
Before you tonight is an arbitration award, an binding interest arbitration award for a unit, very small unit of Board of Ed Managers. Two people. The, this council approved exactly this result of a pension plan for the town's managerial unit back in October, I believe it was. This unit of two people continued an arbitration. We have a result. It is exactly the result of the other unit. And so there's no action required. The only action that the statute contemplates is the possibility of rejection, which we don't recommend.
And if I recall from your letter, if we take no action tonight, it goes into effect this Friday?
Yes.
Okay. So there's not an urgency to get it passed before there's a new hire in this two-member bargaining unit?
No. There's, no, there's never been an urgency as to this particular unit.
Okay. Questions from the council, Councilor Zandry?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I, it's probably more of a comment than a real question, but am I to understand that we actually went to arbitration on something and we actually had a positive result?
Yes.
And I, and I call that out because we often are in this position and we come up on the losing side of it. And I just wanted, just for the point of making a reference, sometimes it pays to stay in our ground because we actually got it sided with us. It was something that we passed for another group and then we basically presented it the same way and it went to arbitration and we came out exactly the way we went in. So, you know, sometimes the investment of the time, money, and effort to push it works and I just kinda wanted to call that out because we'll often bring it up the other way when we spend the money and we go down. So I just wanted to make sure I read it the right way and I understood it the right way. So thank you for confirming that for me. I appreciate it.
Counselor Laffin?
Thank you. I just wanted to kinda piggyback on what Counselor Zandry was saying, but point out that that, that it's subjective, that we, that was a conscious decision to, on this point, strategic to kinda go forward and do that. And we've had others too, the latter thing or whatever. So it's not just, ah, we disagree, let's go to arbitration all the time. This was a very thought out and calculated strategy.
Thank you. Anything else from the council? Anything from, from the public? There being none. Thank you for your time and thank you for the result.
Thank you.
Item seven.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve a transfer in the amount of $104,779,000. $60,000 from regular salaries and wages, $14,000 from wage differentials, $21,500 from other pay, $9,279 from the volunteer tax abatement, and then that is $104,779 to the replacement, replacement pay. This is for the fire department.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Oh, we need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
For the record.
Richard Higard, Fire Chief.
Steven Alsop, Deputy Fire Chief.
And what do you have for us?
We're looking for a transfer within our payroll lines. The need is created because we have three open positions. Two half-year positions equalling one full year, but two open positions. So with those three year-round positions, we have the pay in regular pay, but we don't have it in the replacement pay because there are staffing, we have a minimum amount of staffing on a daily basis, so we can't drop that number. So it's just they're in the wrong account lines is it.
So are these positions that were open and are filled or?
We have two of the positions filled. We brought people on in November, but neither one of them had firefighter training. So they're presently at the Fire Academy, so for about a five-month period, we're paying them wages at the same time as we're covering them with, with replacement pay while they're doing their training. And we still have one more position that is unfilled.
Thank you. Questions from the council? Counselor Fishpine?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Nice to see you again. I just, you know, I see the transfer from the volunteer tax abatement and I know we're gonna be discussing next year's budget soon and I noticed when I was going through there that there was a drastic change, in my opinion, in the volunteer situation. So am I to understand that what we have going on here is more of the transfer from volunteer to career that we've heard about? Is that what's really going on here?
Yeah, that's certainly an indication. The tax abatement, that line, we funded around $25,000 every year. That's based on the, who may apply for that low SAP program and get the tax abatement. We don't know who's gonna qualify every year. It's, you know, it's a guess, if you will. Of that, we expended approximately $15,000. That's why there was the $10,000 we were able to transfer. The members that are qualifying for that, generally they're the senior members in the volunteers, so it is somewhat of a reflection of how many volunteers there are, but not a true indicator. But it certainly is a factor of that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly. Counselor Laterno?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief, on the, the account, I'm not gonna read the whole number, but it says other pay, $21,500. What does that encompass? What is other pay?
Sure, other pay, and I'll read right out of the budget book, if I get it exactly right. This count is to pay for contractual commitments, to continuous duty pay, no sick leave incentive, EMS certification bonus, longevity, pay management, degree allowances, and increases due to contractual obligations. So one of the things that's there is the paramedic bonus. We have some expectations of how many paramedics we have for that calendar year, but sometimes either somebody retires, they move past their paramedic commitment, drop it off. So there's some fluctuation in that. This year, we experienced a little bit of a savings, so that makes that money available.
Okay. So, and that pretty much follows through with the rest of these accounts.
Correct.
Where you budgeted last year for it, it's in the budget and you can see it's not all gonna be used, so it's safe to take from these accounts.
Exactly. Exactly true. We make our best guesses as the budget is basically 18 months ahead of the usage at times, so it's the best guess. We usually get it pre-dialed in, but as we're able to scrape money within the payroll lines, that's what we're doing now.
You're playing for the worst and hope for the best.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Questions from the public? There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishpine?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Laterno?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Morganstein?
Yes.
Testa? Zandry?
Yes.
And Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Yes, it does.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Onto item eight.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve a transfer in the amount of $167,000 from retained earnings to the distribution maintenance account for overhead lines for the Electric Division.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Good evening, gentlemen.
Evening.
Please remind us who you are for the record.
Tony Bucary, General Manager, Wallingford Electric.
Tom Sullivan, Electric Division Business Office.
Thank you. What do you have before us?
Well, we're looking for transfer appropriation, sorry. And this is mainly due to the storms that we, you know, that hit our service territory this fiscal year. We had one in October, if you all recall, and then two additional storms back-to-back this March. And we needed, the dollars are basically cover overtime necessary for our line crews to, you know, make safe damage assess and restore power to the customers in our service territory. So it's to cover their, their overtime. The police charges, additional tree crews, brought in additional resources on a few occasions through, through NEPA to support. Our restoration, NEPA's the Northeast Public Power Association, which we have a mutual aid agreement with, and additional tree crews through ASPW to support, you know, tree clearing and service restoration.
Okay. Thank you for the explanation. Questions from the council? Counselor Laterno?
The retained earnings account, that's pretty much like for us the contingency account. It's the Electric Division savings account, so to speak, to simplify it.
So to speak, yeah, the equity in the division, yeah.
No, no, it's not like the contingency account.
Okay.
It would be more like the general fund.
I'm sorry, you're right.
It's not part of the budget.
Thank you.
You're bringing money into the budget.
Okay. I just, it's, it's good to note that, you know, we had storms and you're able to do this, take the money out of that account because over the years, well before you were here, that there was talk of reducing that account down considerably. And, you know, we always, at least I did anyhow, say, there's gonna come a time when we're gonna have some storms and we're gonna have to go to that account. So here it is. Not as bad as a hurricane, but it's good to have the money put away for it. So I'm glad we're able to do that. Where I wanted to go with that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly. Any other questions or comments from the council? Counselor Zandry?
Hi, good evening. Just, just for my own edification in this account, what is the total balance on that account?
The original budget?
They, we're talking about this, this balance that we're transferring it from.
Oh, from, well, retained earnings, what everybody normally talks about is the cash reserves, cash investment. Currently, it's a little over 25 million.
All right. So I just wanna make sure we're not drawing down a large piece of it to do this. This is a fractional amount, but it's that long-term account for a cushion for critical emergencies. This was critical enough to draw from it.
Yes, yeah. I mean, and because of the amount, it's not really practical to transfer. It would have impacted a number of accounts, kinda, we still got three months left to go, so.
Right.
That thing was just appropriated out of.
Making sure that I was remembering the, I thought it was a small amount, I just wanted to confirm that. So that helps me, much like Counselor Laterno said, we've got, we've got a cushion, some may say it's too large, we should draw it down, so on and so forth, but here's, here's a call to use it. We're using it and it's, for, it's a good purpose for using it. So I'm content with that. Thank you very much.
Questions or comments from the public?
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road, just a quick question then to the chair to them. If we had a hurricane from John Laterno's, Counselor Laterno's question, does the Electric Department carry insurance for catastrophic events though?
Insurance wouldn't cover it. In larger events, FEMA declared events, there's some reimbursement from the, from FEMA.
Right, but I'm not talking these small stuff. I'm talking something, if you're in the five, $10 million range, do you have some type of loss for those or no?
No.
No?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishpine?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Laterno?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Morganstein?
Yes.
Testa? Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Onto item nine.
I move we accept the property tax agreement for the WRE Solar Project on the town's landfill and MIRA property.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Let's just start with a, an update. As you know, the council approved the option to lease the property with Lend Lease some time ago. Right now, we're still in the option phase. We receive a payment every six months. I think right now our payment is up to $6,500 for six months. They're in the process of doing all of their due diligence. They just received the approval from the Connecticut Siting Council for the project. They're working with the Electric Division on their interconnection agreement and they're evaluating how much of the land they're gonna end up leasing on both the town and the Mira property. The lease provides, excuse me, we're gonna receive a lease payment of a minimum of $20,000 a year or $1,500 per acre, whichever is higher, with a 2.5% annual increase. And so that left the negotiations of the tax agreement and that is what you have before you tonight. Shelby has done most of the financial negotiations. He's consulted with a utility expert. He's done his own due diligence. We've also had input on the document from our outside counsel who has assisted us with this project. So we're here tonight to have this agreement approved, if you so, so agree, and I think Shelby can give you a brief overview of his approach and his numbers.
Okay, thank you, Janice. So Shelby Jackson, I'm the town assessor, just for the record.
Thank you.
Janice put me to work as she does from time to time. What we did here in this case in order to formulate this tax agreement was, the first thing we wanted to do was analyze what would taxes look like if we were to just assess this property in the absence of an agreement, so notwithstanding the agreement. Went through a number of iterations and calculations in order to try to estimate that would be. Now normally with the taxation of personal property, which most of this, this is all basically all personal property, business equipment type property, normally in that case, what you would see is you'd see higher tax payments in the beginning years and then they would drop off fairly dramatically in the end, so you'd have very low payments as time went on. The tax agreement allows us to basically restructure that payment schedule. So we wanna, we wanna be able to estimate the same amount of taxes over the 20-year term, but we'd like to structure it so that the payments are smaller in the beginning and just as this council has to budget for increases over time, you would be able to rely on increased revenue over time. That's basically what we did, as Janice pointed out. I was fortunate enough to consult with a utility expert and to just sort of have a double check and a second opinion on my figures and I feel that the agreement that you had before you was a very good one.
Thank you very much. Questions for the count, from the council? Counselor Fishpine?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Shelby, a great presentation because you answered a couple of questions that I had and, you know, that whole personal property thing certainly makes sense given what I'm looking at. But this has to do with the town of Wallingford property as well as the Mira property?
It's the whole project.
Okay. So the, that would be in the affirmative?
Yeah, so it'd be, yeah.
Okay. So, but I noticed that Mira is not a singator to this.
No, this is, this is Lend Lease's property that is on the Mira property. They're still, they're the ones who own the equipment.
Okay, but Mira, does Mira currently pay taxes?
No, they're quasi-state agency.
Okay. So then the extent of the full agreement is just the personal property?
Right.
So anything that's being taxed here is?
So anything that's being taxed here is not owned by Mira, solely owned by Land Lease?
So let me try to address that very good question, Councilman. In trying to analyze what taxes we might expect to otherwise obtain in the absence of the agreement, I did take a look at, you know, attributing a certain amount of tax to the land upon which this facility would be located. So my analysis includes both provision for the personal property, which is the vast majority of the revenue, and then also a component for the land as well. And I based that off of the lease, which Councilor Small indicated there's a lease on all of this land. So that was taken into account and that really is included in my figures. My estimate was slightly less than what they've actually agreed to pay. And I mean very slightly, within $20,000 over the 20-year term. So it's basically equivalent to what we would have otherwise collected in taxes based on our estimates.
All right, so just to be clear, we have a, two entities that are arguably, they don't pay taxes. Now we have an entity that comes in who is utilizing the land for a profitable benefit. And they are a taxable entity. So, but in your calculations, you attempted to utilize the land and what possibly it could be taxed at to come to this resolution?
That's correct, sir. We wanted to be sure that we were capturing all the tax because as you pointed out, it's a for-profit, private industry. It's not a public purpose and therefore it's all subject to tax. So my calculation includes all of that, yes.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly. Councilor Morgenstein?
Hi, thank you. So, just, yeah, I just want to be clear. So we are leasing and we will be receiving payments as far as that lease. And then we're also discussing money coming in for the taxes on a property that is, has items on it, is generating money for them. And did anyone, you spoke of talking to utility people. Did you look at all to this company or other companies how they have done this in other town-states, other locations for this or some other solar company?
Yes, Council, I believe we did, I'll tell you exactly what we did. We looked at some other similar agreements that are out there here in Connecticut. And two specifically, there were a few, but two specifically that I used in my analysis. One was the Porcatuck Solar Center in North Stonington. There's an agreement in place there. And there's also the Candlewood Solar Proposed Facility in New Milford. So we looked at those, those are actual agreements that have been approved. They're in the public domain. We looked at those and tried to compare our numbers to make sure that we were falling in line. We actually did a little bit, we fared a little bit better in our negotiations, maybe because of Wallingford's better location or maybe because we were just able to, you know, to come to a meeting of the minds that was a little bit more favorable for Wallingford.
He's being modest. He's a very tough negotiator when it comes to money.
So the size of the property, the size of the equipment, power generated, you kind of looked and did a, for instance, if they were half the size, then you went 50% more. If we were twice the size, kind of a, doing your math equation, okay.
Let me give you a specific number that might be helpful. The New Milford project was a 20-year agreement for a 20-megawatt facility. And over 20 years, the agreed-upon payments were $2,747,969. So just over 2.7 million. And our totals are $3,124, is that correct, Janice?
Yeah, if it's a full build-out, you know, they're still deciding how big the projects kind of be, so. But a full build-out, yes, it's 3.1 million.
So there's still some decision to be made because they've not finalized their?
Yeah, I mean ideally, that's what they want. I mean, they don't want to have to do less than that. But if they did less than that, then there'd be an adjustment according to the chart.
Okay, and just to echo the public, no discussion was ever undertaken with this lend-lease process for any Wallingford being involved in this as an ownership process? Just, that was not.
They did not negotiate being an investor in this project.
Yeah, you were not given, I just, you know, I want to bring that up because the public has repeatedly brought that up. And we are in a position in this town where we want to get a good tax base, get, you know, a good grant list money coming in and the investment, seeing something as an investment, becoming an income generator. We have not taken that deeper dive. I just feel, I want to, I know we haven't. Thank you.
Councilor Andrew?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. So I just want to get a quick understanding of just a couple of points. So during the construction phase, you've got those two different amounts. That's going to be based on what they're going to build. They're going to decide whether they want to try to build 15,000 kilowatts worth of production solar panels or 22. They haven't decided what they're going to put on the site yet, right?
Correct.
They'll make a decision and that way we'll know either or.
Correct.
So now, the year's commencing from there, I'm going to make an open assumption that if for some reason construction takes a second year, are we just going to get the second, a second year of construction and we'll still get 20-year scale like that?
It's still 20 years, but the construction is at half the price, half the taxes.
Well, I guess, I guess my question is like this. I mean, construction's supposed to take X number of months and we're going to get X number of dollars. If it fell into a 12-month period and we'd get either 15,000 or 22. If they went, if they went into a second year because whatever, delays, equipment, whatever, are we still going to get that entire 20-year scale or will we end up with 19 years of scale there?
We still get the 20-year scale?
We still get the 20, yes. I misunderstood you, yes.
Only the construction phase. I should point out, Councilor Andrew, that normally a company would come in, they'd go through the construction phase and none of that would be taxable.
Right.
Unless it was in place since of October 1st, so.
And, and by the way that this was set up, and I think this is what you were alluding to when you got started. I mean, you build something, you tax personal property, then as it depreciates, you get less money.
Correct.
So we've actually structured this, not only do we, I don't want to say defeat that, but I mean, that's normally a problem. Not only is that depreciation going down, our ability to tax it goes down, our revenue from it goes down. This actually has the opposite effect. As time goes on, we're getting more and in, you know, in the natural flow of things. Things don't cost less going forward, they cost more. So it was a really creative way to do it and I really appreciate the undertaking on it because it helps cushion the blow for, you know, the tax base in town. Because I mean, that actually makes it add an increase over time. So it was really creative. I really appreciate the work on it. So here's to hoping that they decide to go with the 22,000 kilowatts because I'd like to see that cleaner energy on the grid and quite frankly, I'd like to see the additional tax dollars for the town.
I would too, thank you.
The only way they wouldn't do it, physically, it wouldn't work. I mean, that's, that's the plan. So they're doing all the analysis of all the land and so far, so good from what I understand. So that's the only thing that would reduce it is if they could not physically put it there.
Great. So it sounds to me that's the intent and so I'm looking forward to it. Again, from my perspective, it's two things. I like the idea of the cleaner energy getting to the grid. And I like the idea that, you know, we've set it up in such a manner that we're going to grow over the time rather than shrink. So kudos twice. Thank you very much.
Councilor Letourneau?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So on the 22,000 KW build-out, that would encompass, that's the full amount. So that would encompass all 137 acres? Because in here, it says, whereas the company intends to develop and build the facility as here and after defined on a leasehold interest of approximately 52 acres of land located in the town of Wallingford, within three parcels of land totaling approximately 137 acres.
Yeah, the exact acreage that they end up leasing is not determined. That's what they're doing now. So they have, and that's why our lease agreement has a minimum rent. We don't care if you, you know, if they decide they're going to rent one acre of land, they're paying us $20,000, period. So that'll be finalized when they finish determining how much physical space they can use and that will determine the number of acres that they end up leasing.
How many acres of approximately 137 acres? Because there's three lots. There's lot one, lot 19. Well, there's three lots. It says map lot 175, map 161, and map 162. How much of that is the town of Wallingford own, not this other entity?
The? I don't, let me see. Oh wait, hold on a second. It could be as much as, I think, 60 acres on the Wallingford site.
60, and the balance is that other state agency or whatever?
Correct.
Okay.
That's, you know, that's still, that's what's to be determined.
Okay. So we're looking at, if I understand you earlier when you first came up, a minimum, if they develop an acre, we get 20,000?
On the lease, yes.
Okay. And, but if they use the 60 acres, the potential there is $1,500?
$1,500 per acre.
Per acre. So not only will we be getting the lease on the land, but also there'll be tax on the equipment too.
Correct.
So it's, yeah, that's a good deal. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else on the council? Mr. Gross?
Good evening, thank you, Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. When they build on the land now and they say they use 64 acres, but they come back in the future, they can't, do they have the option of coming back to redevelop that down the road if they want to develop more of it? Because there is a large parcel there. They might only want to go to a certain extent at this particular time because if the land is all beneficial to them, they can build on it. They might only want to build so many megawatt plant right now, but in the future, they might want to add to it. Is there a stipulation in there if that happens?
I think that if they want, my recollection, I'd have to go through the option again, but my recollection is that if they wanted, if they leased a certain portion and wanted the option on additional land, they could do so for a period of time, but they'd have to pay us for it. I'd have to look at it.
I was just.
I'd have to refamiliarize myself. I haven't read that agreement.
We should have that availability to know whether that's in there or not because they would, they might want to come back to do that.
Well, they're, you know, they can only do, they can't do more than DEEP has approved them for.
Oh, I understand, but I'm saying in the future, they might want to, since it's such a large parcel and the land appears to be, they're going, that a lot, they're not running into a lot of problems down there on building. They might not need to build out all 137 acres at this point. They never can build all 137, but they might have 30 acres left that they could build on in the future. Where, can they do that? And what's the stipulation in there for that? And they can go back to DEEP at any time. There's no reason they couldn't say to DEEP, we want to do that.
Well, I think at the very least, it's taxable regardless. We're entering into an agreement, but it would be taxable. So we certainly would want to enter into another agreement if that were necessary. But it is, it is a taxable site and the personal property is taxable. So we aren't prevented from, from collecting more taxes should there be a second project.
I just wonder if it was covered under this plan because in the future, it might be worth more and we would want to grab the greater dollars in the future. That's the reason for that because everything escalates, nothing goes down. Do we have the ability to, has the town talked to Mira at all about potentially purchasing that land? Or do we have the option so that land doesn't get taken out from us?
I'm not negotiating anything with Mira, so.
Mr. Mayor, are we ever looking at that land for future development or?
No, we have not. The reason for that purchase was because of the, effluent from the landfill was entering into that property. So Mira purchased it in order to avoid an issue over preventing the effluent. If the town buys it, then we would have that potential liability as far as what's happening with the effluent. So at this point, we have not entertained any, any desire to negotiate with the state.
Well, and I think DEEP has jurisdiction over that property to some extent too. I mean, they're, they're in charge of our landfill too.
Well, yeah, they have jurisdiction over that whole area down there. I mean jurisdiction, but they don't own it.
It's not like it's going to be offered for sale or anything.
Well, but we should have first rights because and I think if the report, and Mayor can correct me, I think the environmental study that was done probably 10 or more years ago now on that land gave it a 30-year approximately time to clean up. The property will be clean, or clean enough for industrial use and passive uses at that particular point in time. If I remember the study correct, and you can correct me if I'm wrong. So it's not, it's in the time of a, at the time of a town, another 20 years is not that much time. So we should have the ability to foresee or look into the future to make sure that land doesn't get taken out. If they're building in that area, we would want it, control it for this solar. Don't you think? No? You're just sitting back. We bought that.
There, I assume that they're entering into a lease with the state. Otherwise, they can't use the property at all. So I'm not sure what value would be for the town to pay money to acquire the property from the state. And it would have no other purpose for us other than the solar panels that are on it. So we're spending money that we've now, I don't know if the amount of money they're being, they're paying us in the way of taxes would offset the cost of purchasing the property. I'm not sure what our interest would be.
Well, the interest would be the potential to develop that area down there, control the area. We did, and you brought this up, not me. The property was purchased because of the affluent water flow, because the trailer park was, the trash, the dump had affluent water that contaminated the wells over there. The town, the five communities, Wallingford, Cheshire, North Haven, Merritt and Hamden, took our money, meaning the taxpayers of Wallingford who had garbage removal and the taxpayers of the other communities, gave it to the state and said, here, purchase the property. And that's how it was purchased.
No, I disagree completely with your description. The five towns did not purchase the property. CRRA purchased the property.
With our tipping fees.
It doesn't matter. CRRA purchased the property. We've been through this before.
It was with your, and it was with your blessing on it that you did not want to take control of the property at that particular point in time for the reasons stated.
The towns did not approve the purchase by CRRA. CRRA purchased the property on their own volition.
I'll just say this, in the meetings that you had, it had, money had to be appropriated to purchase the property. You were one of the people on the group that approved the money being used for that purpose.
I do not believe that is correct.
Okay, that's, that's, so CRRA, which was a quasi-state agency that was funded through the tipping fees, they had a budget that you approved every year?
We did not approve the CRRA budget. So I understand there's a disagreement here. There's two different opinions and it doesn't have much to do with this contract that's in front of us.
Well, the contract is in the future that hopefully we can control some of the additional and maybe take over and because the state is getting revenue on it, maybe we can get some of that revenue also. The interconnections, we'll talk, I guess, there's no reason to talk about it. You guys don't know about it. There's no reason to discuss it. So I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? And I bring it back to the council. Councilor Letourneau?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So on the Mira side, MIRA state side, if, when the company starts the project, what if they went to that property first, leased that property and used ours last? Is there any provision that they have to use ours first? property and used ours last? Is there any provision that they have to use ours first?
There, I mean, we're taxing the whole project. So-
No, no, I understand on the, on the, on the physical, yes, on the-
I mean, if they, if they, well, if they start there and they start operating on a smaller kilowatt basis, I mean, the contract controls as to what we're taxing them. So no, doesn't matter where it's located, it's what they're doing.
It's kind of about the acreage. I'm going the price per acre.
Right, so- Oh, you mean the lease?
Yeah, on the lease, on the lease side.
So, so let me try to clarify if I can, and Janice, you can, you know, back me up or, you know, correct me. Either way, so this agreement before you kind of sets out what the tax payments would be for the facility itself overall. Now whether half of it's in, on town land and half on state land or some other proportion, that would only affect the lease payments. It's not going to affect the tax payments. Does that help?
Yes, I understand. That's, that's where I'm going is the lease payment, not the tax.
And I can't, although, I can't imagine that the project would proceed without them exercising the option. As soon as they exercise the option, they have to start paying us the rent and the option is not an endless time period. So I don't see that playing out that way.
Okay.
I think I'm going to need a clarification. I understood these payments to be the real property as well as the personal property.
It's incumbent, when Shelby did his analysis, that's how he came up with numbers.
So there isn't a separate lease payment? This is the payment?
You have a lease. The lease, the rent they're paying us.
I agree, but the dollar figures we show here is a combination of the two or no?
No, no, no. The lease payment is separate from that. We get lease payment in addition to the tax dollars.
Okay, because there's a, there's a line in the contract that-
When I started, I just gave an overview of how, where we've been and where we're gone. Right now, we're getting option payments. When they, when they exercise the option to lease, that's when we start getting the rental payments. And when they finish, when they start construction, we'll get a construction tax payment in addition to the rent. And once they commence operation, we get the full tax payment in addition to the rent.
Okay, I'm, I, on page, page three, under inclusivity of taxes, it states the taxes payable under this agreement represent real and personal property taxes with respect to the facility and property imposed. So the schedule does not reflect the combination of those two? It does?
It does. The taxes are not the lease payment. Those are two different payments.
Okay.
These are taxes, the others are rent.
Okay, so going back to what I was originally after, on the, on the property itself, the per acreage, per acreage, the $1,500 per acreage that we're, that we're getting for the property.
So the lease option expires in 2020, okay? So if they started on the MIRA property and don't exercise this, then this, they're not going to exercise it. They're not going there. If they never come on the Wallingford site and they're just on the MIRA site, he's going to tax them in accordance with law. Okay? This agreement won't control. He's just going to do what he normally would do.
Which would be more money.
It's more money up in the beginning and then it depreciates rather rapidly. So that's, you know, and that's something we would like to avoid. But that's if, I can't imagine that that scenario would take place, but if it did, that's how it would work.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else from the council? There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Fishbein?
Laughin'.
Yes.
Yes.
Sure about that?
Laterno?
Yes.
Maroon?
Yes.
Morganstein?
No.
Testa?
Yes.
Xandri?
Yes.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. On to items 10 and 11. I move we go into executive session pursuant to Connecticut General Statute Sections 1-206D of the Connecticut Statutes with respect to the purchase, sale, and or leasing of property, and Sections 1-206E and 1-210B5B to discuss confidential, commercial, and financial information regarding a potential development proposal.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor of going into executive session signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare the council in executive session. Please kindly clear the chambers. Thank you. I call the meeting back to order. Is there a motion to come out of executive session? I move we come out of executive session.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare the council back in public session. There being no further business on this agenda. A motion to adjourn is in order.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare this meeting adjourned.